Good morning. This, the Wednesday, May 15, 2019 recessed session will please come to order. I would like to let everybody know that Commissioner Sears does expect to be here. He is in an early meeting that has run a little long, but he will join us as soon as he is able to do so. The first item of business on our agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and a motion would be in order.
So moved. Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Next item on our agenda is public comment. Mr. Leiting?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. At this time, the board will welcome comments from members of the public. This is an opportunity to address the Board of Commissioners regarding any matter that a member of the public has on their mind. It's not an opportunity for a dialogue with the Commissioners. And anyone who wishes to address the board, if you would please, address the board as a whole. And please approach the podium, and when you get there, tell us your name and where you live, and then address your remarks to the whole board. So is there anybody who wishes to address the Commissioners? Yes, sir.
I'm Fred Shawn from 111 Oriental Street. There's been a lot of bad press about South Naggs Head and the beach nourishment, and it's been going on and on. It's an old problem that was created long before this board, probably back when the young people put those developments in and put those private streets in. Altoona, that was at the end of my street, was taken out in 91 and left two streets that were landlocked. They had to negotiate a route out to the main road. And now with the beach nourishment, for some reason or other, when they were doing it, when they got to Oriental Street, there was no berm at all. It was level, maybe even pitched towards the houses some, because the one morning between the beach nourishment and the houses, there was like a lake. And I was told there was no money, no sand, no this, no that. And then the next day, there was a dune there. So there seems to be some lack of communication between the engineering firm, or Kama, and the town, and the contractor. It's not, it doesn't seem to run smoothly. And I understand, I haven't looked, but I understand down at Loon Court, from Loon Court South, they have a large berm again. So I don't really know what's going on, but I think we need to fine tune it. And I do agree, most of the people there don't agree with me, but I do agree with the town. They cannot buy those houses that are out in the water, because if they do buy them, they're setting a dangerous precedent. If we have a thud storm and there's 40 or 50 houses like that along the beach, everybody is going to say, "Oh, you bought that house for $250,000. Buy ours, it's yours." The town can't do that, can't afford to do that. So that house, and then, of course, the building, years ago, when Altoona got washed out, most of those houses fell down because they run six by sixes. So then the code was changed to eight by eights and, I don't know, 16 or 20 feet in the ground. Well, now, the only ones that win is the insurance company, because a house doesn't fall down, the land washes away, and then you wind up with more seagull houses. It's an ongoing problem. That's about it. Good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Shawn. Would anyone else like to address the board? All right. There being no further public comment, we will close the public comment session at this time.
Thank you very much. The next item on our agenda is consideration of a storm debris removal contract. David Ryan.
Mr. Mayor, before he comes up, I just wanted to start off by saying, this, as you'll know, and David will note, that this is an extension of an existing contract that we have with Crowder Gulf, which, of course, we're recommending that the board extend this contract for an additional year. And then there's the ability for four more one-year periods. But after that, I know Commissioner Cahoon has always been a very strong advocate of trying to get somebody here locally to be able to do these types of projects. And in order to do that, we, that next opportunity to submit, if you approve this, would be in the early winter, or early, I guess, would be after the season. We'd go out for another RFQ and hopefully try and get maybe a local vendor. But I just wanted to start with that.
All right. Thank you. What the town has been doing over the past five, six years is getting prepositioned contracts for debris removal and debris monitoring services. Back in 2016, the town had put out an RFP for debris removal services. It was determined from that RFP of the six firms that had submitted that Crowder Gulf was the lowest responsive, responsible bidder. And we have had an annual agreement with Crowder Gulf over the past four years and would like to go ahead and extend that agreement through fiscal year 1920. So that the request would be to authorize the town manager to move forward under the existing terms and conditions of that agreement for extension through fiscal year 1920.
Thank you. I'll ask the board if they have any questions. Commissioner Fuller?
No.
No.
Is this the same contract that the county executes and the other town executes as well?
No, this is separate and apart. There's, in our local agreement that the town has with the county, the county has a separate debris removal contractor, and we could use those services as need be.
The other question would be, what's the timeframe for them to be on site if they're called?
Right. Per the terms of the contract, it would be a 50% mobilization within the first 24 hours and 100% mobilization within the first 48 hours, once the notice to proceed is issued from the town.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to adopt.
Okay, I have a motion to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt the contract extension. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Thank you very much. All right, thank you. The next item on the agenda is a discussion of the stormwater projects in consideration of a contract and budget amendment.
Yes, I'm up again. Included in the board packet was a proposal from Withers-Ravenel to carry forward a portion of the work for several of their project areas that the board has reviewed preliminary assessments for. They include project area number four, which is the Wrightsville Avenue corridor, project area number nine, which is Naggs Head Pond subdivision in conjunction with Carolinian Circle subdivision, project area number 10, which is Naggs Head Cove subdivision in the proximity of Kipper Court, and project areas number 12 and 13, which are along NC State Route 1243 in a proximity of milepost 19 and 1/2 and milepost 18. In discussions with the engineer, there have been several iterations of the proposal to look at the overall project costs, scheduling, and at this point, staff is recommending, excuse me, staff is recommending that Withers-Ravenel proceed with the grant application associated with project area number four and the full design all the way through construction for project areas number 12 and 13. Withers-Ravenel would then also handle the surveying for project areas number nine and 10, and then town and staff would go ahead and carry forward the design and construction for those two project areas. In total, the fee proposal submitted by Withers-Ravenel is $217,000. We currently have $90,000 in the stormwater capital reserve, so that would be a shortfall of $127,000, which there is a request for those funds to be taken from fund balance in order to cover the remaining portion of that proposal. So the request is to permit the town manager to execute a change order with Withers-Ravenel in the amount of $217,000. Be glad to answer any questions. There has been some supplemental information that has been provided to the board with a breakdown of those costs per project area as it relates to both surveying and engineering.
Thank you, David. Board member questions? Commissioner Sears?
David, in that breakdown, there's some inconsistencies for surveying and architectural work between, I think it's 12 and 13. Can you explain some of that? In the price breakdown on that?
Okay.
Surveying cost is different, drawing cost, engineering cost is different for the two projects, but the larger project seems to be, some of those on the field are, cost are less than some of the cost on the other side of it. And I'm just wondering why that, you're, being an engineer, you know what goes into it. I don't know what goes into that development.
When the proposal was prepared, there were some efficiencies by packaging those two projects together. Both of those would have to go through NC DOT for review, but they would also have to be in their format. If you recall, there has been some discussions with DOT representatives about potential cost share for those two projects. DOT has indicated that there is a potential for a cost share of up to $100,000 for project areas number 12 and number 13. But in order for that to move forward, the bid documents and construction specifications would have to be designed in accordance with their standards. So if you start breaking these projects out, you start losing some of those efficiencies that you would have if you combined them together. So that's why you may see some inconsistency between the one project area as opposed to the other project area with the individual breakdown of costs.
Okay. But between those two, if we're doing those jointly, we got a surveying estimate of $6,000, and then we got a, for 12, and a surveying estimate for $9,000 for the other one. Design development's 15 for both. Construction drawings are 28 and 27. And then you go to permitting, you got 45 and 75, and 75 and 25 for bidding. So I'm just wondering why those particular items, if we're bidding this as a package, why are they broken down that much difference in price or cost for that?
Okay, so the, for the permitting, for the bidding, it would be, if you looked at that, it would be $12,000 for the permitting as a whole. But if you start breaking it out, so if the board decided to move only, move forward with only one project, you start losing that efficiency of bundling those together from the permitting side. Same thing with the bidding side. So that's why there's a discrepancy there. It's not a 50-50 break if you start separating those out.
I guess I'm asking, is there, what are the differences that create that 50-50, that separation of price and management, even the management of the project? What are the differences that, if you're managing this project together, I understand it's going to be cheaper, but there's not a, technically, a break in here because it's cheaper to do it together. What you've got is, you've got an admin project cost of $19,000 for 12 and $26 for the other. I'm wondering what the differences are in that, not in the groundwork, but in the preparing work in that, that drive those costs so much different?
All right. Two items of note. Surveying work. Project area number 13 covers a larger area.
Okay.
All right. So since you're going to cover a larger area, there's going to be increased cost for the surveying. Same thing with the construction admin cost. Since you're covering a larger area, that there's going to be a greater need to cover that scope of work over that length.
Okay. And the drawing, and the design work being the same price for that, but then the permitting side, the permitting side for the larger area is less than the permitting side for the smaller area. So why do we have that discrepancy in permitting?
It could go either way. So if you were, if the board was to move forward with just one of those projects, one of those projects, it would be $7,500 either way. What I tried to do is break it out with those two projects together, and that number that had been provided in the proposal in order to demonstrate that as a whole, or if you break it down into its parts, this is what it would look like. But if you were to separate this out as one project and moving forward, it would be $7,500 either way you went.
So in that case, if we did one now, it's $7,500. We did one later, it's $7,500, so the 250 doesn't come into play? The 2,500 doesn't come into play?
Right. If you move forward with only one of these projects, yes, you would have $7,500 under permitting, you would have $7,500 under the bidding portion of that.
And then we could expect that the next time moving forward?
Yes.
And it's more beneficial to do both projects at the same time?
In this case, yes, because there are some efficiencies that are created.
Did we, and refresh my memory, at our workshop, did we decide anything about project four, Wrightsville, because there were a lot of questions about the cost, how it's going to be paid for, and did we reach a resolution? This is one of the most expensive projects, and I didn't think we had reached a resolution on that.
Or Carolinian, both?
Because I know we, I know we had some MSD discussion, but I think we were talking about what the cost benefit analysis about Wrightsville was versus how many properties, since it is one of the most expensive projects.
Mm-hmm.
So I just, I was a little confused as to if we were moving forward with the, because this was the $28,000 of this money as well.
I think the critical path for any of these projects, if the board would like to move forward, is to go ahead and get the surveying initiated. I think what we found on the current round of projects is that we had delayed surveying, and that was a function of getting too far along and having the funds available for that following fiscal year. At this point, if the board would like just to go ahead and break out the surveying part, we could go ahead and get that initiated now, and we wouldn't have to accept this proposal in whole. We could go ahead and just get the surveying part initiated.
I just had, I just wasn't, in my mind, I didn't know if we were going to do project four.
Well, the, I guess one of the questions that we have about project four is how much grant funding would be available? And how do we, how much do we have to do to figure out how much grant funding might be available for that project?
Yes, listen. Thank you.
Right. And those are unknowns at this point in time. Until we go ahead and make that grant application, you know, we don't have a good sense as to what the town's contribution is going to be and what funds are available. We're currently in that process. In fact, scheduled to meet with a representative from Clean Water Management Trust today to go ahead and discuss with this project and its, whether it would qualify for the Clean Water Management Trust application and funding.
So is the amount of work, assuming that it is eligible for that funding, is the amount of work that's presented for that project, as I understand it, is that the minimum that we would be able to do to get a set of documents that would be able to be submitted for the grant application?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I guess the question then would be, in my mind, in light of the discussion that's forthcoming with, is do we either withhold authorization of this pending that discussion or authorize that project subject to an answer that, yes, it is available, it is, does qualify for possible grant funding, and then we proceed to do the minimum necessary to make the grant application for that project?
I agree with what you're saying. I guess my question was, if you've got a meeting this afternoon and you get some answers, then that would, could we take action on June, at our first meeting in June, based on those answers that you get today? That would be, you know, that would just be my question is, or do you have to have this signed document before you have the meeting today?
No. No. We don't have to have this document signed or executed today. We can wait until the beginning of June. Again, I think our focus was trying to initiate action to get the surveying portion going. And if the board wants to move forward with that part, we can move forward with that now, or if you want to delay until the June 5 meeting, we can do that.
All right. Thank you. Commissioner Walters?
And Withers-Ravenel, if it's a viable option, Withers-Ravenel is going to help with that Clean Water Management Trust grant?
Yes. As per their proposal, they would go ahead and prepare all the background information to submit that application.
Thank you.
All right. Commissioner Fuller?
Three things, really none of them directly relating to the contract, but they all affect it, and that is, I don't believe that we as a board have committed to Carolinian Circle or Wrightsville. So if we haven't committed to that, then I have a hard time entering into a contract. That's first. The second thing, this is a big philosophical thing with me, is I really have a hard time with the town paying for NC DOT's responsibilities. That's just a philosophical value. NC DOT should take care of their own, and we, I know, we want certain things done, but it's almost like having a gun placed to your head. If you want it done, you pay for it, even though it's my responsibility, and I don't like it. And that's a problem for me. And then third, I do like what Commissioner Cahoon had said earlier about a discussion about municipal service districts, and I was wondering if we're going to have a conversation about that, because that could also impact what projects we're going to do. I, you know, I don't know where we left the municipal service district concept as it related to stormwater. I'm not sure. So those are my three points.
All right. First, it sounds as though this might benefit from waiting until the June meeting, for one, for us to have additional information about, I think it's project area number four, the Wrightsville area, and the extent to which we might be able to get the grant funding to support that. We would need also then to decide whether we were committing to the Carolinian, to the Carolinian Circle. The Wrightsville discussion, to me, is complicated a little bit by not knowing how much of that cost is offset by the state. And that factors into the MSD discussion. One of the thoughts that I've had about the MSDs personally is that, that that's really partially a timing issue. We've started on some of these drainage projects using our, you know, stormwater tax, if you will, to pay for these. We've done some of those projects so far where there has been, yeah, I guess, a better cost benefit ratio in the board's mind. Going forward, if we want to undertake a project but need additional time because of the expense, but the neighborhood would prefer to accelerate it, for whatever reason, then that may be a candidate for municipal service district. If it's going to take us, you know, five years to accumulate the funds and get around to it, figure out a way to do it, but they want it done, then in a shorter time period, then there may be a way to do that. But I guess I would ask the board, in what form do we need to have further discussion about Carolinian, Wrightsville, and the MSDs between now and the first? Do we need input from staff? How would you, how would you ask that we proceed?
MSDs is a philosophical issue that is upon us, so I don't think we need staff input on that.
Okay. All right.
Well, I mean, you know, we got to either think we need it or we don't need it.
Right. Do we want to take parts of this contract then, that we're ready to proceed with?
If we take parts of, does that change the cost item?
Probably.
Yeah, I guess it just depends on what parts you take. If you were to move forward with the surveying costs right now, then I don't think that that would materially affect the other parts of the proposal.
I'm prepared to move forward on some of them. I just have the major question about Wrightsville, and Webb, I think, has a major question about Carolinian. And we agreed that we wouldn't call it that, but...
But that's what it is.
Yeah, but I just would like some answers from Clean Water Management on my part about Wrightsville before we commit the extra funds, because I don't want to expend funds if we don't end up...
Yeah. Well, I think I'm probably kind of on the same page with you. We've had discussion, and it seemed like we were ready to go forward. I understand the reservations about DOT not doing its part, but it seemed to me in the discussions that we had up till now, we were, we were okay to proceed with 12 and 13, and I would suggest that we wait on four until we've had the discussion with state about grant funding, and then suggest perhaps for now that we stop there.
I know that Commissioner Fuller has not been here. We've assumed more and more responsibility for the ditch because it's there, it's in the town. DOT funding has dried up. I'm hopeful that sometime in the future it will come back, although ever since I've been involved, we've had issues about getting it even cleaned out. So I'm prepared to move forward on the South Naggs Head project, but I just have more questions about other things that are typically much more expensive without having a fuller picture. No pun intended to your name, Mr. Fuller.
And I totally agree, South Naggs Head needs to be done. I mean, the project is not the issue with me. It's just an internal philosophical issue that somebody much larger than us with much larger systems is not willing to fulfill their commitment to their constituents. That's my...
And we all share, when we share that frustration. I think everybody up here shares that frustration. Is there value in us proceeding with 12 and 13 today, or do we just wait until June the 1st and potentially proceed with four, 12 and 13?
And 10. I don't think anybody had an argument about 10.
And 10, I'm sorry.
I don't believe.
Is there any, is there any reason why we, why we just don't wait and get that information and clarify any cost change that there may be, and then act on this contract at the June 1 meeting?
I just think it, the overall schedule, when you look at the overall schedule, you're just pushing it back another three weeks.
Okay. I think that's okay. Is that reasonable? Are they going to start in three weeks if we approve this?
Yes, once, once we go ahead and we execute this proposal and initiate the change order, yes, they will be ready to go ahead and proceed with the survey work.
And when we come back in June, they will have had boots on the ground and started the projects.
If we approve this today, they will have already been out there starting the survey within three weeks. This is the question.
I'd have to go ahead and check with the engineer to, to find out that, the details of the schedule. But the intent was to move forward with that survey work as soon as possible.
You're good either way.
I'm willing to do it. And I would like, if we execute this today, I would expect boots on the ground before three weeks. Otherwise, the talk about the schedule won't.
That, that, are we comfortable making a commitment that we can guarantee?
It's not in the town's control.
Yeah.
So I'm hesitant to, to agree to that.
I mean, I think I'm pretty confident that they would start, but if they don't, then, you know, I don't want to represent to the board that, with that Withers Ravanelle being here. I think they will, but I can't promise that.
They have to schedule their work, yes. But knowing that this is a busy time of the year, there's a lot of variability that comes into the schedule. So again, without having some additional information from the engineer, from the surveyor, I'd, I'd have to.
Yeah, I just don't think we can make that guarantee. I mean, no more than we can guarantee that they start if you execute this in June 5th, whenever you execute it. I feel pretty good about it, but I can't guarantee that they'll, what they, what they will do between now and your next meeting.
Yes, Commissioner Walters?
I was just going to say, unless we're going to accept the contract in entirety, we can't pick it apart at this point and pick and choose, I wouldn't think, without going back and forth with them and that kind of thing. We still have, we'd like to know about your meeting today. So it just seems to me that we would wait, glean more information, knowing that there's a three-week delay and we'll need to remember that later in the year. But perhaps in your conversations with them, once you gather more information, you would know when they would have, you know, if it's signed in June 1st, when, when do we expect the survey to begin? Does that make sense?
Right. We can initiate those conversations now that if the board is prepared to move forward in the June timeframe, we can get them ready and prepped up so they can move forward within a three-week timeframe from the time that, that change order is executed.
I think we're pretty clear on project four, but what other information do we need to come back with at the June 5th meeting? I assume you'll have an MSD discussion, maybe at your workshop. The one thing to remember about that is if you do decide to do an MSD, you won't realize the revenue until we can put the tax on July of 2020.
But if we don't do it at some point, it never happens.
That's right. That's right. Yeah. What other information do you need on Carolinian Circle?
I'm not aware of any additional information we need on Carolinian Circle.
It, it becomes the cost benefit analysis. I mean, you know, you can do a back of the envelope one fairly quickly. The question is how detailed do you want to get in it? And, you know, I mean, I, I do think there are projects that are larger than just a community that serve the town. Even though I don't agree philosophically with South Nags Head, I do believe that's not an MSD. I think that is a town project. There are isolated pockets where we have habitually had problems that serve a very small number of homes that if the town did the entire project, it'd be extremely costly for not much benefit. And that's sort of where I am. I mean, the holes in, the holes that are in Nags Head have been the holes for 30 years. And everybody knows where they are. And they could be very costly to fix. And if people built in the hole, then I think they bear some more responsibility than just the town trying to fix their problem.
So I think what I'm hearing is, in terms of information to bring to us at that meeting, is defined schedule for starting the work if we make a commitment at that June meeting. The feedback from the state on the grant participation in project four, and some degree of cost benefit analysis on project nine. Am I correct in summarizing that?
I thought you did it very well.
Okay. All right.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, David.
They have further asked, are we, the MSD discussion and idea of the event might occur, or plus, I think that's going to determine whether or not we sign this contract in June. Is that correct?
Not on everything, no. But on some things.
But that'll hold up the whole contract unless we redo the contract.
Well, I think it seems to me that of we, we can't really, well, we can have a discussion about MSDs generally, but we don't know to what extent in project four, the state's participation is going to help offset that cost. And, and then the, the cost benefit to, to the town changes for that project. So we'll have more information about that. We know what we're doing with 12 and 13. So it seems to me that of the ones that are in this contract, with what we know today, the MSD discussion is probably about project number nine. And I think that we've asked staff for additional information about the cost benefit for that, to have that at our next meeting. So if that cost benefit is not satisfactory to us, I think that we will take that out of the contract and that we will then proceed with the work that we know about. And we will have an MSD discussion about that and any other projects going forward.
Is that?
That works for me.
It's just project number nine that there's an MSD discussion about?
Well, depending on one thing or not happening.
Okay.
Eight was the bid one.
Right. But that's not part of this contract. But, but yes, the one that's in this contract with what we know today, except for we want the cost ben, some cost benefit is nine. We won't really know about four until we know what the state's going to do.
Excuse me, four.
We won't really know about four until we know what the state's going to do.
Right. I guess I'm building a fear of making a date.
So is staff clear on that, on the direction? The state's participation in four, cost benefit on nine, scheduled boots on the ground if we commit in June?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is discussion of the Beach Nurishment Project, including the South Nags Head ponding and the cliff.
Yes, sir, we have, from CSE, Hachin Kazkowski will come up and give us a presentation on where we are. This was, obviously, one of the concerns of, once we got started, and HK will go through this, from the time we put the bid documents out and this, this, we didn't have this experience for the first project because we, from the time we bid it to the time we did it was months. In this case, it was over a year. So conditions have changed. And so I think that initial information that was put up on our town website is not exactly what's been constructed now. So that, there was a gap there. And what we have up now, from the survey that was done in April, we were able to actually put construction to be built or practically almost as-built construction documents up on the website. And it, it shows that the whole project had to move westward, which meant there was less dune in some areas or no dune in some areas. As a result of that, we've come back and HK's been able to make some field adjustments, more or less on the fly, to get a starter dune built in some places that didn't have it. Some of these houses that are sticking out there, pretty good distance, there's really nowhere to tie a dune into. And if you've got a six-foot berm and a six-foot dune, you've got 12 feet of sand right 10 feet from your house, which makes for very unfavorable conditions. So that's part of that adjustment. And then we had almost, within 24 hours of 200 feet, 150 feet, 200 feet of sand being placed in that area, we had a big tide that out, to my surprise, washed over the berm. And that's what some of that water was. Initially, I thought maybe it was groundwater or king tide, but it wasn't. There was some overwash that was great for the surfers, but not maybe for the first look at the beach. But how's that?
Very well. Do I need to give a presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
I think Cliff has already explained it very well, so I'm going to show some technical support for Cliff's explanation. Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Board. I'm Hachin Kazkowski, or people call me HK at the job site. So I serve as the project engineer of the 2019 Beach Nurishment Project. And together with me today, we have a tree hair from CSE. He is the Senior Technical Associate. And he generates all the plots that's posted during the bid process and the construction sites that people read. And also, we have our field team lead, Captain Drew Giles, here. So they can answer some questions if you have anything about the field work. Okay. So here, first, I want to give everybody an update of what has been done since May 1st. Today is May 15th. Construction started on May 1st. So today is the 15th day of the construction. So so far, as of Monday, we have finished 14% of the total project volume. The total project volume is 4 million QB yards. And even with finish 14% of the volume, but only 7% of the project area has been nourished because the South Nags Head received more, higher than average nourishment volume. And what we have done during this construction phase is, includes a daily observation. We observe the discharge point, observe the sediment quality. Also, we collect sediment samples. We take the sediment samples back to the office and in the lab to analyze the grain dis, grain distribution. And also, we coordinate with the contractor, with the town, and with the permitting agencies during construction so that we, we know everything is in compliance with the permit conditions. And also, the contractor is doing what it is written in the contract. And also, we have a weekly project meeting on every Thursday morning at 10 o'clock. So that's a part of the construction management. And we receive the contractor's daily report package. It includes at least seven documents every day. And also, CSE generates our own daily observation report. So everything will be submitted at the end of the project. And GLDD, as a contractor, assigned two hopper dredges for this project. The first one has already, has already arrived on May 1st. And the second one is estimated to arrive on the 25th of May. It's a Saturday. So that's the current estimate. And then the whole project of 4 million QB yards is anticipated to come, to be completed by the end of July, whether depending, and if everything works well as planned. So the end of July will be the end of the project. So the second part of the presentation will just give us some technical support for the purposes and need and the procedure for the recent redesigning of the project. And while I go through the slides and the technical information, I would like to compare this 2019 project with the 2011 project in, in many aspects. So lots of time, we say that this is a re-nourishment. It's very similar in the nature of construction methods and to the 2011 project. And apparently, it has been very successful. We put the similarity together upfront. So that's why the 2011 project, if you recall, it took six years to receive the permit. But the second time, for the re-nourishment, it only took two years to receive the permit. Because we put this upfront, in front of the permitting agencies, to let them know that this nourishment is very similar in a scale, in the nature, and the construction window to the 2011 project. But now, this time, we're doing this construction now. I feel this is a time to really compare the project. It is, they are similar, but they are not exactly the same in the dune construction, in the volume, in the profile adjustment. So we will go through some details later. Here, this is the 2019 re-nourishment that is ongoing. The total volume is 4 million QB yard. The project length is 10 miles from mile marker 11 to 21. So here is, this group of numbers are the design volumes for each ridge and the sub ridge, and the sub ridge. These volumes are very important. We have three sealed drawings. People have seen this during the permitting phase, bidding phase, and the construction phase. But one major thing that hasn't changed is these numbers. So this is what we propose to place along each ridge. And this is the number, these are the numbers that are permitted to be placed for this project. And this number, 4 million QB yards, that's the contract number, that's a permit magazine number, and this is the number that will be placed along the project area. And this time for the re-nourishment, one big difference is that we are putting, we are constructing an initial dune along ridges three and four. So 2011, no dune, but this time, we have an initial dune. And this time, the contractor used, well, used two hopper dredges and the six subline landing points. So this of, well, on the right, there, there's lots of information that I tried to put there. So here is the northern boundary from Barnett Street, a beach access. There's a mile marker 11. And at the bottom, that's the southern boundary of the project near McCall Street, mile post 21. So the whole project is 10 miles from north to south. And there's a, near the middle of, like 60% of the project from Station 730. When we talk to the contractor, we always refer to the station number, but actually, it's 730, Station 730 plus 00 is near Forbes Street. And so from here to the end, that's 5.8 miles will be completed by the Alice Island Dredge. That is a dredge that we see offshore at this point, at this moment. And the second dredge will arrive on, is expected to arrive on May 25th. And that dredge will complete the 42% of the project from Station 730 up north to the northern end of the project. from Station 730 up north to the northern end of the project. So, that's their plan. Liberty Island is planned to finish 35% of the 4 million QB yards, and the rest of 65% of the volume will be placed by the Alice Island. So, six landing points will be used for the whole project, three for the Liberty Island, and three for the Alice Island. So, currently, Alice Island is using the very southern landing point near Limous Street. So, their plan is that they land the pipe there after the dredge arrives, the pumping proceeded to south. So, after they finish to the south end, they flip the pipe and go north. And then, they switch this subline to their second subline landing point and go south first to tie in with the finished section, then flip the elbow and go north. And then, they use the third landing point and go south first. After they tie in with the finished section, then flip north. And Liberty Island will do the same thing, starting from the northern end, and then go north first, then flip to south, then use the second landing point, go north, tie in with the finished section, then go south. And at the last, Liberty Island will use the third landing point, go north first, and then flip to south and meet the Alice Island work area around this station, 730. So, that's their overall construction plan. As you can imagine, anything can change. Those landing points, they have already set up four landing points. So, those four landing points have certain stations. And the last two landing points may be more or less around that area until they are installed. So, that's your overall plan. So, here is a 2011 beach nourishment project. That's a, Trey developed this plot after 2011 project was completed. And back then, they used eight subline landing points. And then, they used three hopper dredges and one cutterhead dredge. And here are the volumes back in 2011, and total volume is 4.6 million QB yards. So, we will compare these two projects again and towards the end. So, these two slides give you some general information of the, these two projects. So, this is, again, Alice Island arrived at neck side on May 1st. And USACE sent their representative the same day, and they complete the startup inspection. This is required by the permit. So, no time lost on that. So, pumping started that evening at 7:00. And they used the first landing point, the very southern one from the Limous Street. After a short period of time, they pump a pad. So, it looks like the pipe, the construction proceed north, but then, after three loads, the pipe was flipped to south. And the construction has been proceeding south since then. So, this photo, this drone photo was taken by Drew on the second day of pumping. So, you see that they have already built a pad. And then, at that moment, construction started proceeding south. So, this is a nourishment section. This is the initial pad. This is looking south. Here are the houses at the very south neck side. And now, this photo shows from the construction site looking north. Here, again, that's a landing point. The little wedge, that's the pad after three loads that the contractor has built. And then, construction was proceeding south. Okay. If picture worth is worth of 3,000 words, so I guess a video may worth 4,000 words. So, I'm going to show you a short video that was taken on the second day of construction. You see, this is a dredge. So, we, when we were on the job site, people asking, "Oh, how far away the dredge is?" It doesn't look like it's that far away, but it's 3,500 feet away from the shoreline. So, there's an underwater pipe connect the discharge point from here and to here. So, that's a 3,500 feet pipe. And this subland is marked by floating buoys so that the fishing boats or other boats can be aware of some much pipeline existence. So, that's the second day of pumping. Next slide shows a video. How do I go back to? Okay. Thank you. Okay, here. I was trying to play this video. So, this is a drone video taking you from the discharge point and looking south, and flip the camera and looking, looking north first, and then looking south. Again, this is on the second day of pumping. This is a overall big picture of the construction site. Okay. So, that's the update from the construction job site, and 15%, 14% has been completed as of Monday. And here shows the three sealed drawings, and that have been published on the town's website or have been putting at DCM's record. So, first set is a permitting drawing. Apparently, the drawings carry the name permit. So, the purpose is for permit application. So, during that phase, we, based on the town's budget and the FEMA's reimbursed amount, so we set the total project volume as 4 million QB yards. And we distribute these 4 million QB yards to the four ridges of four ridges and the two subridges. So, this area shows the same, like five houses near, this is Altona Street. And then, it's the south of Altona Street, five houses are sitting very close to the surf zone. And the mid-high water line went in front of the house or underneath the house before nourishment. So, this is the same area during permit drawings. And the second set we release is a bid drawings. So, here are the dates that we release each set of drawings. The bid document compared to the permit document, it has a half-year gap. So, the survey has a half-year apart. And beach condition change rapidly. So, you can imagine between here and there, we have different beach condition. That's why we have, at the time of bidding, we redesigned the project and gave this newest bid drawings to the contractor for their bid price. And then, this is the time of construction. And the town manager has already explained, between these bid drawings and construction drawings, it has been 1.5, one year and a half passed. So, beach has changed again rapidly. So, this is a current drawings that the contractor is building the pitch based on. So, we'll explain this. We will have some zoom-in plots for this area. So, you can see the difference. Here, we propose a dune. It's never a continuous dune because it's a, the reason we build a dune this time is for the area, there is a lack of dune, or the dune volume is significantly lower than the average value of the entire project area. So, we find the ridges 3 and 4 met this criteria. That's why we designed an initial dune there. But if the dune, based on KMA's current rules, so there shouldn't be any sand placed underneath, under the house or behind the house, if the dune feature goes under the house, so we have to break the dune, or behind the house, we have to break the dune so that we can have a more uniform dune feature for the town wide. So, here, again, shows why we have this three sets of drawings, why one drawing cannot work for everything. The main reason is a rapid change of beach conditions. Here are some numbers to support this reason. Between July 2017, when we issued the bid, the permit application, and then November 2017, that's when we issue the bid document. Neck side, again, 1.4 million QB yards. That's because between this, this date and this date, you neck side went through this summer seasonal accretion time. So, that's why this, where this volume was from. So, if you gain this much of sand, you have to redesign. And the same reason, between the bid set and the time of construction, neck side, lost significant amount of sand. So, I'm going to show some profiles to show how significant this sand loss has impact, neck side. So, another possible reason, it doesn't apply this time, but overall, is one of the reasons when we redesigned the project at time of construction, is that the bid volume may not be the same as the final contract volume. In the bid document, we have base quantity, which, based on the owner's reserve, the budget, we believe the contractor can at least complete that quantity. But if the bid price comes back in favor to the owner, then the contractor may be able to finish more. So, that's why we have alternate quantity. So, sometimes, the owner would issue a contract in between this base quantity and the maximum quantity. But for neck side, after the first change order, neck side, maximize the permit volume or the bid volume, which is 4 million QB yards. So, this doesn't apply for this project, but that's one of the reasons. We always do these construction drawings before the contractor started pumping. This is the industry standard, and it is consistent from project to project. So, this plot shows, there's a 3.5 million QB yards difference between, the red line represent November 2017, that's when we did a survey and issued the bid. And the black line represent your April condition, that's the last month condition that Drew led the field team and collected data and confirmed that you have lost 3.5.
Hachin?
Yes?
I may. Where are ridges? It looks like we gained some. And where's approximate ridge 900?
Oh, there's 995. It's just 100 foot south of Cherry Ink House. This is a ridge 3S, the south neck side.
Thank you.
So, look at this wedge of sand. That is just 3.5 million QB yards. For this station, it lost 73 QB yards per foot. But on the average, neck side lost 66 QB yards per foot along the 10-mile beach. And then, if we design the dune at the top, the top elevation at 12 feet, so here's the 12 feet. So, in 2017, so the 12 feet, if we build a dune, it would tie in here. Yes?
Mr. Gooden, are you, are you thinking this is the entire island gain and loss?
No.
Okay. I thought this was the rest.
No.
Yeah.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you feel that this loss is due to the object in the, on the beach, in the water that's causing more erosion to the south of it? And that's why there's a 7% difference? Any overall average, 66%?
Overall, yes. Yeah, the overall, yes, it's from the north to south. And north neck side, on the average, always lost less, some less than south neck side.
But I'm stating in this particular case, you said this was just south of the Cherry property. Do you feel that Cherry property has caused the faster erosion rate to the south of it because it sits in the, in the water?
It's not necessarily because it sits in the water because this is, but where the Cherry Ink House is located, always has a higher erosion rate. So, it's a, the house, the location of the house is, doesn't affect the overall erosion of the profile. So, the beach condition in front of the house is worse than other area because the house is located more seaward. Does it explain this?
Mm-hmm.
So, the reason I picked this station because the construction just finished this section. So, we're going to have some photos and some more as-built profiles of this station near this area. So, this 12-foot contour retreated landward, or westward, for about 23 feet over this past 1.3, 1.5 years. So, we show here, this red dotted line shows the original design during the bid process. So, if we keep this original profile, if we do not redesign the project, first of all, there's no high ground anymore. Remember, there's a black line represent the current condition. If the berm, if this dune stops here, there will be a ditch behind the dune. Here's the low ground will be. And also, the contractor has to fill this gap, fill this loss first before they can continue with the, with the, with the design. So, which means, neck side, you have already lost 3.5 million QB yards. And the contractor has to replenish this 3.5 million QB yards before they can proceed to build a bigger beach if we keep the original design. So, apparently, we have to redesign this. So, the next slide shows the black line is the new profile, new template for construction. It basically, we shift this red dotted line westward or landward, shift everything because the profile shift. So, this is a cross-section plot. On the plant view, what happened for some houses that was sitting further seaward. So, for example, this area. So, Aluna Street, Altona Street, that's here. Am I correct? Yeah. Altona Street here, based on the bid document, there was a skinny dune in front of Altona Street. It couldn't have the full dune because you have to keep a uniform line for the dune seaward edge. So, because everything shifted landward, the skinny dune would slide under the house, which is not permitted by KMA. That's why there was no dune based on the revised design. There was no dune. And the same situation happened in front of these five houses. There was a skinny dune, but since everything moved landward, that dune disappeared. So, but after, after Great Lakes finished its section, and lots of conversation has occurred between the town manager, town engineer, and the supporting staff, and I believe some board members may involved. And so, the town decided, instead of building a 12-foot regular dune, but build some lower dune in front of Altona Street and also in front of these houses. And not in front of this house because it's a further seaward and in front of some other houses further south. So, that's the field order that we coordinated with Great Lakes. They were agreeable not to increase any contractor price, even they have already nourished this area. So, they agreed to come back after they finished the south end of neck side and come back and redress this area and push a low dune in front of the houses so that some protection can be established in front of the houses. But now, the full 12-foot dune, that was designed for the rest of area. But now the full 12-foot dune, that was designed for the rest of the area. So here's a timeline, how we achieve this revised design. First, we collected this, uh, before dredging survey in mid-April. We tried to tie in this final before dredging survey as close as, as close to construction as possible so that the contractor, we don't, we don't, so that we don't have to revise it at time of construction. So we finished this in mid-April. And then we issued this revised profiles on April 22nd. And then after the town and GLDD reviewed our revised profiles, we submit this to DCM for their approval. And DCM required for plan view, normally we don't do plan view because the contractor doesn't build the beach based on plan view. They, they don't be, they do not build the beach based on the view. They base the beach based on the cross-section profile, the exact points. But DCM tried to create some visual, visual effect for this revised design. So we did it, Trey did it really fast. We prepared this plan view drawings and submitted. And then DCM requested a site visit on this day. And then some agreement reiterated or some, or established during the site visit, including no sand should be placed under the house, no sand should be placed on top of the sandbag, and no sand should be placed behind the house. So those are the current KMA rules. So those rules were reiterated and the contractor expressed that, they fully understand that. And then the town requested some dune revision in front of the houses and give them a lower dune, but some form of protection in front of the house. And the GLDD, again, they agreed to revise the dune construction without cost increase. And finally, DCM approved the revised design on this day. And the town published the construction drawing on their website to replace the bid site or the, further the previous permitting site. So the pounding issue, because of this KMA rules, no field under or behind the house. So we can't go under the house. And the house is located lower than the design berm elevation. So that's why this area after nourishment is lower than the beach in front of the house. So a pond was formed. And also GLDD, for their safety concerns, they leave a 10-foot buffer around the house. And this is their general practice, they are consistent from project to project. That's what they, they did in 2011. For next side, they did this buffer, 10-foot buffer in 2017, when they did a three-town project. So they can't get too close to a house. That's understandable because they're using dozer and loaders to push the sand around. So there's two reasons cause some pond. And another major reason, I show this, um, this is a tide. The green, the blue one represent the predicted tide, tide. And the red one is the ac- the actual tide elevation. You see, this is on May 8th and May 9th. That's what Mr. Augburn just expressed, some people expressed concern when there was a pond formed after this. It's actually, it's a minor wave event. Just the surge level is not that high, but the predicted tide level is higher than the rest of months. You can tell, that's, that's what we call that a king tide period. So king tide plus surge. That's why the construction worker observed that there were two foot of water above the berm overnight. And then since this is a lower area, so the sand didn't, the water pumped behind, uh, under the house, behind the construction berm. So that's what, that's why the pond occurred. So this series of photos, oh, there's missed some word here, it should say, um, could you go back? Yes, thank you. This is Seagull Pond in 2011. So back then, we have seven houses there, sitting in the surf. And this is before nourishment. And this is immediately after nourishment and also after hurricane and rain. You see, there's a pond, people gave it the name Seagull Pond there. So similar to what we observe today. But very fast, three months after this photo was taken, so the pond was filled naturally. No mechanical equipment was involved. It's all by sand blowing, sand blowed by wind. So the pond was filled naturally, three months after. And this is 10 months after, the pond didn't re-exist. And also, the elevation under the house is much higher than before construction. Even no sand was placed during nourishment. So it's all by natural wind-generated sand. So the reason I showed this series of pond is that this kind of pond can be recovered naturally. And sure enough, this is last week and this is yesterday. Water has been drained because the sand that you have, no, uh, either the natural sand or the nourishment sand is very coarse and it can drain very well. If you give this some time, it will heal naturally. It's still lower than the construction berm, but because we couldn't put any sand in front of sandbag or in the house, it's still lower than the berm, but the sand has been drained. So even now, we had almost a two-foot surge over the past two days, but since the predicted tide level is a relative lower, we're going through neap tide thankfully. So that's why water didn't repound here. This kind of pounding issue will reoccur. If there will be another king tide and there's a surge and there's some mini, minor storm and as long, whenever the berm, the berm is overtoped, that water will go to the lowest place. So it will be pounded, but again, it will recover soon. This cycle will be repeated several times until wind blows sand fill this void. So a pond like this can be recovered very fast. So we call this a temporary pond. And again, the same thing in front of the pink house. The pink house was, um, located in the surf, the mean high water line went underneath, under the house. So this photo was taken right after nourishment last week. So again, some overtopping occurred and the water pounded in front of this house. And this was yesterday. The pond was gone and this dry and the sand already started filling under the house. So this, this situation is similar to that five-house situation. But here has some difference. This is a Cherry Ink House, the yellow house at Station 994. This is last week, this is yesterday. So last week, the pond was a bigger. This week, the footprint of the pond is a smaller, but still pretty deep. Sand hasn't had time to fill this void. So there is a project Station 994, just right in front of this house. So I show some cross-section plot of this house. The right line represent the before dredging condition. This is the beach and the house is located here. This is ocean, ocean is on the right, landward is on the left. So if we pick this point, it's the most seaward point of the house. So the elevation here is a negative 3. So we build a berm, berm here at plus 6. From plus 6 to negative 3, this is a nine-foot drop. So Great Lakes, they put a 10-foot buffer in front of the house. They push the sand stop here and some sand slide under the house. So this area is filled a little bit. So it's not negative 3 anymore, instead it's around 0, means sea level. So this a black line represent the as-built profile. So from the elevation of the berm to the bottom of the house is at least six foot difference. So that's how deep that pond is. So there's no dune since we cannot place sand behind the house. So no dune and no, no dune and no continuous berm. And we calculate this void, including this berm. It takes about 2,300 cubic yards to fill this void and build this dune as of the condition of last Friday. So the sand will gradually fill in this void at a very slow pace. So this week, we plan, Drew has his GPS survey equipment here and he will re-survey this void and then see how much sand has a fill naturally in this void. But as of last Friday, it took, it takes, we estimate it takes 2,300 cubic yards to fill this. So this area photo was taken by Drew yesterday. So this is a footprint of the pond. This pond is different than the other ponds I showed in the previous slide because the water depth is about six feet high. So it can create some potential public safety issue around the pond. So what measure the contractor and the town have taken is that they put an orange fence and this caution tape around the house to mark this as a construction zone to warn the general public not enter beyond this zone. So this, once again, we compare this, um, 2011 project and the 2019 project. 2011 is 4.6 million cubic yards, this time a 4 million cubic yards. This time, we have 15% less sand in the project volume. And 2011, we redesigned the project at time of construction back in 2011. I know some of you were here. So if you recall, for 2011, in the permit application, we proposed a dune structure along reaches 3 and 4. But we removed this dune at the time of construction because between the bid set and the construction set, next side again, half million cubic yards. So it's a different condition there. The beach grow seaward. That's why we felt this dune was not necessary and we put the dune volume to the dry sand berm. So this time, next had lost a significant amount of sand. So we continue with the dune design and dune construction. And the dune requires a volume between 10 to 15 cubic yards per foot. So the berm elevation between the 2011, 2019 project are the same, all plus 6. So what this result, this time, we are going to create a wide berm. But in 2011, the berm was wider. So if you want to compare just the width of the, the dry sand beach. Oh, could you go back? Sorry. And the top plot, Trey created this top plot yesterday, he can explain more. There's some contour lines and the green line is, uh, green circle is what we do for this time for the dune construction in front of houses. But somewhere, there are two red lines showing the construction berm in 2011. So you can compare the relative width of the dry sand beach. But again, what we see is the construction berm. And the berm is expected to be adjusted over the time. And some of the dry sand that the contractor placed on the berm will shift in the water and, until the profile reach to that keyword equilibrium, equilibrium profile. So the contractor is paid by volume. And we designed this project as a town-wide project based on the total volume and the volume to each ridge and each profile. And this project, I compare, another difference between now and back in 2011 is that the contractor has improved their technology a lot. They are more organized, they are well-prepared, maybe because this is the third time for them to come to the Outer Banks. So they're well-prepared and they manage the project better this time. So that, uh, and for CIC, back in 2011, if you want to see your aerial photo, you have to rent an airplane to fly. But now we have drone, we can fly as frequent as, practical as the wind, Outer Bank winds allowed us. So that's why we decided to put together some periodic newsletters to update, to, to provide the project update and, um, provide some project information. The first issue was, uh, was provided on May 3rd last week. So we plan to do another one after they finish the south end. So if you have a chance to read the newsletter, let us know what additional information you would like to put in the newsletter and your comments and we can certainly incorporate that in our next issue. So at the end, I want to show another clip of videos that Drew took yesterday to show you the current, oops. To show you the most recent pumping event at the south next side, yes. So fly, this is a landing point. And here, they built, they finished this section and they build a ramp every 200 to half, 500 feet to assist beach transportation across the, across the finished section. So, so completed, those are the five houses we show. And this is the Tulasco House and this is Cherry Ink House. That's the pond around the house. And they went further south, there are two more houses, they have a thinner dune compared to the adjacent area. The, on the average, the dune crest width is 40 feet, but it varies from place to pa- to place, from 20 feet to about 50 feet. So that's where their construction stops. And here is, uh, NPS Ramp 1. So that's where the construction will stop. That's also that, the existing stormwater outfall there. So that's how close they are, it's less than 1,000 feet to the southern boundary. So they expect to finish this area by the end of this week.
Wow, nice.
Yeah. Thank you. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? Commissioner Sears?
No, no questions.
Great pro- great progress. And thank you for explaining all the dunes and the pounding. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, that was very illustrative and I, I think we'll, uh, see if we can, we'll at least raise the question, I think, and see if we can get some federal help. That problem is, I mean, these illustrations so, show so graphically how problematic those houses are. Thank you.
Commissioner Walters?
Thank you.
I, I'd just like to say if we could get some of the video, the drone video to put on our website. I think people would like to see that.
I, I agree with you, I think they would. I think it'd be very helpful for folks to be able to see it.
Okay.
Okay. Great.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Um, is it time for a break, board?
I think so.
Sure.
Okay, all right. I would say, uh, let's take a 10-minute recess. Okay, the board will return to, uh, to order. The next item on our agenda is Item G, Items Referring To and Presentations From The Town Attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, and I hate to follow that wonderful presentation on the beach nourishment project. I don't have any visuals or anything quite as exciting as all that. But I am prepared to talk with the board regarding, um, the, um, proposed ADU ordinance, or at least the concept. least the concept of an ADU ordinance, and the issue of whether or not the board should consider incorporating or referring to, or relying upon restrictive covenants that may be set forth in various subdivisions as a component of the ADU regulations. The, there's a couple of different ways of looking at this, but I think that's really the core issue. The, the first thing I looked at was whether there's any legal authority, one way or the other, about whether the town can or cannot rely upon those kinds of external standards or requirements as part of what is considered an ordinance for purposes of issuing permits. There is no case law in North Carolina on point about this. There is some authority outside of the jurisdiction that does say that zoning officials have no power or discretion to refuse permits on the grounds that the, the proposed use would violate restrictive covenants, as this is not something that can be enforced by the local government. Likewise, that granting an exception for a particular property use cannot be invalidated merely because a restrictive covenant prohibits the use of such. Likewise, there's some authority that private restrictions and agreements are not to be considered and are immaterial in determining the validity of a zoning ordinance and should not be used to influence or considered as part of the administration of a zoning law. Again, that's outside of North Carolina, so there's no authority in North Carolina that follows that, nor is there any that has disagreed with it or refuted that. There is some authority in North Carolina on, with respect to the analysis and consideration of ADU ordinances in some of the local governments where they were found to be enforceable without any regard to or any reliance upon restrictive covenants, which is not a surprise. I mean, that, that, there'd be some cases where ordinances have been considered where there's no consideration required by those ordinances of any local restrictions that may be included within various neighborhoods. So the, the short answer is that it's unclear as to whether the town can or it would be prohibited from utilizing and relying upon restrictive covenants from various neighborhoods as part of the consideration of these kinds of permits. But there's a number of practical reasons that I wanted to also go over that I think weigh against this type of concept. First, the town probably does not have a ready record of all current subdivision restrictive covenants. These don't have to be filed with the town, although they are, typically are recorded with the Register of Deeds. That's really important in order for those covenants to run with the land. So they typically are a matter of public record through the Register of Deeds, but that doesn't mean that they've already been supplied to or that town staff has gone around and gathered up all the different restrictive covenants from various neighborhoods that might apply. Because the town does not always know what current covenants might apply, it's at a disadvantage in trying to interpret and rely upon such covenants in making any kind of permitting decision. Also, the town has traditionally taken the position that subdivision covenants are not enforced by the town and that zoning and building code laws do not consider neighborhood covenants as part of the permitting process. I think part of the reason for that is that if it were otherwise, the town would be delegating some of its authority and regulatory power to a homeowners association. And I think that's really been antithetical to the way the town has done things in the past. And again, the town's prior practices are consistent with the way this is generally done nationwide. Also, the fact is that homeowners associations can do some things, can enforce some restrictive covenants that would not be enforceable if they were simply incorporated into a, into an ordinance. Restrictive covenants are treated as matters of contract. They're not, and since they're enforced by a homeowners association and not by a local government unit, they don't implicate constitutional rights, nor do they really implicate protected property rights. And so, an association has the authority to do things in the development of its covenants and the enforcement of those covenants that a local government would not be able to do. Likewise, there is some pretty clear authority when we're talking about covenants that they are to be, that restrictive covenants are to be strictly and narrowly construed in favor of the free use of property. So even if you were to want to rely upon those, you would have to narrowly construe them and apply them, given the way that restrictive covenants are typically applied by the courts. Another concern is that if the town were to rely upon or to incorporate standards set forth in restrictive covenants, these are, also are subject to various defenses that the landowner has when an association seeks to enforce the covenants. These defenses include the defense of waiver based upon the prior failure to enforce the covenant in certain situations. This issue is something we talked about at the last meeting. It's not always an absolute defense. In other words, when an association has the right to enforce a covenant but has failed to do so in the past, does not automatically preclude them from doing so in the future, but it can be a defense. It can, there can be a defense that the, that the association has waived the authority to enforce the covenant. And my concern on this is that if that's a potential defense, the town would be in a position of having to sort its way through that potential defense and trying to rely upon or apply a standard from a restrictive covenant that may be unenforceable because of the defense of waiver. There are some other defenses that would also apply. One is, that it's not exactly waiver, but it's the intentional abandonment of a legal right or privilege. That's another defense to the enforcement of a covenant. And again, that requires a fact-intensive inquiry. Interestingly, in preparing for this, there was a, I found a case from, that was decided by the Court of Appeals, well, it was, the, the opinion was issued last week. The case is called Dill versus Loiseau, I think that's the French pronunciation. It's a case where the Court of Appeals had to review a trial court judgment interpreting restrictive covenants. In that particular case, the court affirmed a finding that the restrictive covenants were not enforceable because of the defense of waiver, but it required a fact-intensive inquiry. And I think it illustrates that the town or town staff would be in a position of having to do this fact-finding, this investigation and analysis of things in order to determine whether a covenant might be enforceable or not enforceable if they're trying to rely upon the dictates of that covenant in making a permitting decision. The bottom line from that to me would be that there would be, well, using that kind of process would become much more time-consuming, would slow down the permitting process, would, would probably greatly protract the process and also expose the town to additional challenges when it makes a permitting decision that it, that an owner is not happy with beyond those that you would already face just with respect to, you know, the standard approach to your construction of ordinances. So, you know, and there may be some other practical concerns, but those are the ones that occurred to me in addition to the, you know, the overall uncertainty about whether it's really a legal practice or not. But even if it were lawful, I think that there's these series of practical reasons that will weigh against utilizing the standards from restrictive covenants and making these kinds of decisions. And for those reasons, we would recommend that they not be incorporated into or referenced in any way in either the ADU ordinance that's being developed or in any other zoning and planning ordinances. So with all that, I'll be glad to field any questions y'all might have.
Start at that end. Commissioner Sears.
So your overall impression of ADU?
The, my overall impression of the regulation of ADUs, well, there's some uncertainty there too, but I think that what the town is, is on the path towards doing in terms of developing the ADU ordinance, my preliminary thoughts are, it's probably something the town can do, there's probably some benefit to it. There are some concerns about whether or not there's really any statutory authority. That question hasn't been answered in North Carolina yet, whether the town has the authority to regulate that. There are some situations where the town cannot prohibit ADUs with respect to granny pods, for example. And so, you know, but having said that, to me, there's, it's, it's not much different than in any other land use regulation. I feel like there's some ways of validly restricting this kind of use, or at least controlling the way that it's done. But there are some, I know that staff has been working with, with Ben Gallup on some of this too. I think they may have met yesterday to talk about this in more detail, about those, about the, about the specifics of the proposed ordinance and some potential legal issues in more detail than I'm talking about here today. But I think it's still worth considering and looking into. I'm, I'm not recommending that y'all not pursue with that.
Renee.
You've answered a lot of my questions and appreciate all the work that you've done. Give me another perspective to think about as it relates to ADUs.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, well, I mean, as far as the question of covenants, for me, it, it, that's a, seems like a Pandora's box, that every permit application in every neighborhood that thought it had covenants would become a public hearing with their attorneys and, and staff time to try to figure, I just, that seems like a nightmare to, to me in, in any circumstance. Commissioner Walters.
I'd just say thank you for the research.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I'm, I'm gonna keep my comments very narrow because as you know, I've got certain concerns about ADUs. Some of them are still legal and I don't know whether to just share that with staff or the attorney or not, but as far as it relates to what the report was today, I think was great and I absolutely one hundred percent agree. We shouldn't even try to use restricted covenants as one of our methods, period. You, the mayor said it best, it's a Pandora's box and that we shouldn't do it.
Well, I just want to say, this, this issue, it comes up once in a while when we're talking about ordinance development and I think, so it's not specific to or limited to the discussion of the ADU ordinance, but I think it's useful to talk about this or at least put your, put our, put it in perspective periodically as y'all are going through your ordinance development process. Next time, I'll have, I'll have some drone footage to bring my presentation to life.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you very, thank you very much for that, for that report, for looking into that.
Yes, sir.
The next item on our agenda are items referred to and presentations from the town manager.
Thank you. I'm gonna stand up for this one. I do have pictures for mine and I'll, but I'll try to be as brief as he wa, he was. Waiting Tom, not counting.
I just wanted to, can I take over now? Yes, sir.
Okay, I just wanted to go through the last couple of weeks and share with you some things that are coming up. I did just want to start with, the May third, it was a Friday afternoon, we had the Honor Roll for Law Enforcement Bicycle Riders. This is a group here out in front of Town Hall. On that afternoon, we proudly hosted the Honor Roll Law Enforcement Bicycle Riders who are paying tribute to law enforcement officer killed in the line of duty and the families they leave behind. They stopped in Nag's Head on their trip from southeastern North Carolina to Washington, Washington DC for National Police Week, which is taking place this week. And of course, we remember today, May fifteenth, as Peace Officers Memorial Day is, and also is the day that Sergeant Earl Murray was killed. This, this group heading to DC, they stopped in Chesapeake and they met Earl's daughter who followed them from Chesapeake up to DC for the ceremony today. That was a, that was a great event. It was kind of sad, but they went through and they read something about each and every law enforcement that's died in the line of duty in Dare County. There were more than I was aware of. They also, one of the touching ones was when they read about Iwan, our canine dog that passed away of cancer. So they remembered everyone and every animal during that time. March fourth, at Doughty Park, we had the March of Dones event and they get the honor of being the first event at Doughty Park that got to use the bathrooms, the new bathrooms at Doughty Park. So we're mighty proud of those, that facility and the bathrooms there. It enhances the facility, much needed. Of course, May sixth and May eighth was a busy week for Bike to School Week, or excuse me, Bike to School Day, Bike and Ride to School Day on the sixth, the bike rodeo on the eighth. Also on the eighth, the mayor may talk about this more later, but the, there was a may, mayoral roundtable to protect North Carolina's coast where all the mayors came in. Secretary Reagan, Reagan, I think it was his request to put this together. And this was to affirm our position and our belief, the position that we don't need offshore oil drilling off our coast. After that, the mayor went with Secretary Reagan at his request of host two more meetings, one in Carteret County, one in Brunswick County, to try and get them to solidify their position against oil and gas. May eleventh was Art Rages, second year. It's been at Doughty Park. I think Art, Doughty Park will be the home for Art Rages. May eleventh was a very busy day actually in the town. A lot of things were going on in the town that day. The thirty-sixth annual Nag's Head Woods Run, went through beautiful Nag's Head Woods. I like, I consider Nag's Head Woods, this five K to be the granddaddy of them all because it, I remember when this was the only running race on the beach and now it seems like we've got one just about every weekend, almost every week. So that brings people to the woods, brings people here. The eleventh and twelfth, Mike Tillit is, he is becoming an ambassador for tourism. He's, he's doing a, a big favor to us. When they had, this is the first annual OBX Broad and Custom Festival that was held at the event site. I think it, it drew a large crowd, some really neat vehicles you may have seen riding around town. But when, when this was advertised, he advertised it in beautiful Nag's Head. And so I, I love it when people refer to us, you know, they, they choose us, they want to be here and they refer to us with those type words. Something I just wanted to point out also, the, this, the, you, you may notice in town this week, there's a, two hundred and ten college students that are here for the eleventh year. And again, they, they've chosen Nag's Head for the place for their Atlantic, Mid-Atlantic retreat every year. It's called SICLAM, it's the Student Institute of Campus Ministry. They've got about ten houses or do the math, we have the required number of houses to house, two hundred and ten people. They are, they are frequenting our businesses. There was a large crowd of them this morning at one of the coffee shops, students from West Virginia, coming from all over. It's just, I, I saw them Sunday night coming in, it's a big crowd, you know, people all around Admiral Street, around those businesses, getting settled in and it's just, I think, a testament to the town that they would choose us, eleven years running. The lifeguards are back, you'll see them out training and trying to get ready for this year. Their first day on the beach will be the Saturday of Memorial Day, before Memorial Day. They'll have with them, we've got our new town brochures that are printed that Roberta does and does a great job on. In this, they'll have information that they can share amongst all, all the other things that they do for the beach, about the forty-four beach accesses. And I wonder how many towns have forty-four beach accesses, something I think we should be proud of. The public sound accesses at Jockeys Ridge, Harvey Sound Access, the Nag's Head Estuary Insite, Little Bridge. It lists all our parks, Town Park, Skate Park, Wellbone Park, Doughty Park, multi-use paths and the Dog Park. It's got the residential trash and recycling schedule that we can share. Then of course, it's got all the contact information for any questions, some information in here about hurricane preparedness and then the general information about what you, the general rules of the beach. Glad to see them back because it means the weather's getting better. Jeanette's Pier, Mayor Pro Tim and I had our advisory committee meeting last week and the pier, I think, is really coming into its own and is really kind of doing a great job. It's worked through some of its kinks of being a new state facility. They, they've redone the guest shop, the, they've redone the snack bar. It's a little more inviting, they have a really neat, is it Jervis Beach Whale?
Yes.
Or Dolphin? That exhibit, that's kind of rare, that's there now. They've got, and this is a busy time of year for them because they're doing a lot of school groups. They are averaging about twelve to fifteen thousand students every year that are coming to the pier and they've got fifty-one out of the hundred counties have sent a, a school group to the pier. And they've got 51 out of the 100 counties have sent a, a school group to the pier. Other thing I think we can brag about is, when I was looking at this, we've, obviously we've got three piers, Outer Banks Pier and the Naggs Head Pier in town. And we've got more piers, you know, pier, I don't think we'll see any more piers. And we're, we're very blessed to have three in our town. I looked and if I'm correct at what I saw, the only other town that had, there's only one town that has two and it's Oak Island, they have two. And there's of course many that have one. But we're very fortunate to both three. I'm not gonna say anything more about beach nourishment, except I hope everyone gets a chance to check out this dredge, the Ellis Island. It, it is, it is, it is just kind of a, a marvel to look at. When you look at the size of this dredge compared to the other dredges. This is its second project, project, so it's still working out some of its kinks. We've set a goal kind of in working with Great Lakes and we've got a great relationship with Great Lakes. I'm very, very pleased with them. They're trying to get this dredge to do seven loads in a day. Right now it's done six, it's hadn't done a, a full capacity, don't know that it will. But it takes, you know, it takes a while, you do the math of six loads in, in 24 hours. It takes a while for this thing to unload and you can see how low it sits in the water. And by the time, I mean, it's nearly out of the water by the time it, it unloads. But I hope everyone gets a chance to check that out. You may have seen this in the paper, the South Naggs Head Water Tower was painted. And it was back online, actually Monday. Fun fact, it took 376 gallons of paint to paint this 5,000 gallon water tank, which stands 150 feet tall. And Commissioner Cahoon, I'm sorry, it's not a beach ball. I wish it was. I want to brag on one of our employees, Chief Building Inspector Corey Tate. Corey, it was recognized here for his, receiving his third, his Level 3 Standard Certification in all five inspection trades, which include building, electrical, mechanical, plumbing and fire prevention. This is the fifth time he's received this. There's 4,400 active code enforcement officials in North Carolina, but only 270 hold this certification. And he might still be the only one in Dare County. I wish somebody would hurry up and get one because Corey gets called on a lot for, because he can do it all. And we're extremely fortunate to have him with us. Beautiful picture of the beach, I just thought it was, it just looked good.
That's nothing to do with the person.
I wish we could just put this up on the screen and leave it, just so that we can all, you know, marvel at how lucky and fortunate we are to be here, which we know. Ribbon cutting for the Phase 2 of Doughty Park is upcoming. I wanted to, to point this out, it's for Phase 2 of Doughty Park. We're trying to schedule this, where it, it's tentatively set for May 23rd at 10:00 AM to coincide with the first farmer's market at Doughty Park. We're gonna try and get some of the kids from the elementary school to come over and participate with us. Maybe even challenge them to a basketball game, mayor, if you're up for it. And, you know, we'll take on the best five kids in the school. I, I found this picture, this is just an impromptu game of kids out on the basketball court enjoying, enjoying Doughty Park, which is what, one of the things I think we envisioned was just unscheduled. You don't have to sign up for a league, you don't have to be part of a team. You can just go to Doughty Park and, and enjoy it whenever your heart desires. And then, lastly, I wanted to just say that Memorial Day's coming up, May 27th. We'll have our Memorial Day Ceremony here at Town Hall at 11 o'clock. And Todd Kraft will be our guest speaker. Todd will be the second employee that's spoken, that, that served in a member of the armed forces. And this is something that we've, we've, Karen Hagie is another one that we would like. She couldn't attend this, not that Todd was second. But Karen couldn't attend because her daughter's getting married. Karen, of course, served in the Coast Guard, Todd, I believe, in the Air Force. So we're excited to hear him talk about something other than septic health. So we invite you all to that and I hope you can come and, that's it.
Thank you, Cliff, appreciate that. There's a lot going on in the town, a whole lot going on in the town. I think we're all very happy to see the beach nourishment progress that we saw up there today. And excited to see Doughty Park come to completion and, and move on to even, even more good things in the town. So thank you. We've come to the Board of Commissioners' agenda and I'll, I'll start now at this end this time, Commissioner Fuller.
Um, I'd like to go last. I, I only have, why don't you start, um, I only have one thing I'd like to bring up. And that is, there's a recently completed dune deck on the oceanfront that I'm sure most people have probably seen. It's built to 35 foot tall. It was permitted by KAMA, it was permitted by the town. The adjoining property owners signed off on it. I don't think anybody would have ever thought, except maybe the person that was building it, would have thought it was gonna look like that. And I just would like, if the board hasn't seen it, I'd like for us to start a process of, at least, a process of looking at dune decks and the height of dune decks. And that's probably throughout town, not just on the oceanfront. And I, I don't know what to call them other than dune decks, or unattached decks or whatever.
It sits off the dune, right, doesn't it, parallel the house?
It's right beside the house.
Yeah, which is west of the dune.
Right. Yeah, I don't know what to call them other than dune decks. It probably needs to come up with a different name, but it's something that I don't think any of us ever envisioned as something that we would think we would enjoy on the oceanfront. So I'm, I'm just throwing that out to see if other board members agree. And if so, I know, in talking to the manager, it's already on planning board for discussion, but I would like for us to put some oomph behind that too.
Thank you.
I'd just like to take the opportunity to thank the planning staff and everyone that went out to Art Rages the other day. It was, it was awesome, there were so many kids out there and families and kids were playing music. And it just, it's just heartwarming to see that in, you know, in our town when people enter and people come from other communities and visitors. And it really helps to show, we value many things in the town of Naggs Head. But the fact that we still value families and, you know, healthy lifestyles and things like that, it's, it's really good. So I'd just like to thank everybody that worked really hard to make it happen and, and also worked that day to make sure everything ran smoothly.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
I would echo Commissioner Fuller's comments about the board talking at least something about those decks. There's been numerous phone calls about it. A lot of consternation, like, what? Legal? I said, yeah, it was legal, it's okay, it was legal. Well, what are y'all gonna do about it? I said, well, there's not a thing about this one right here. Well, you're gonna continue to permit those, so we might want to give the planning board, you know, a little bit of support. And the other thing, while Commissioner Walters talked about Art Rages, I'd like to thank Kelly and the Police Department and everybody that participates in the Bike to School and the Bike Rodeo, giving out the helmets. I think all of those things add up to a good thing. Especially the walk to school, bike to school. And teaching bicycle safety is really important. Maybe we need to start teaching the adults bicycle safety. And the last thing that I have is, trying to monitor my mouth, is the cluster at Little Bridge. Those lights are awful. They blink whenever it rains, if you're coming from the west. It doesn't mean somebody's in there. With the simple design of Little Bridge, with it going up and then down. I mean, I almost got rear-ended the other day because I stopped for a pedestrian and the contractor behind me really didn't want to stop. We've paid a lot of money, what I consider a lot of money, to joint venture with DOT to put the lights. They don't work. Whoever the contractor is for DOT needs to be reeducated and take a look at what they have in Florida because the Florida stuff works really great as intended. I'm not sure at Little Bridge short of a railroad-type crossing that we'll ever have true safety there, simply because of the speed. While 50, if you look at it in terms of age, 60's the new 50, so obviously 60's the new 50 as well in the speed limit zone. So I just don't think it's effective and I think we're gonna end up with a tragic situation. And I don't want to be negative about it. I want us to be positive about how we move forward and, quite frankly, DOT needs a new system. Because it, it just ain't working. I did see people, I did observe some people though, yesterday coming back from Anio. Everybody stopped for the person wanting to cross. I applauded them. But it's easier to see them when you're coming from Anio because you've got the parking lot. When you're coming from the east to the west, you've got a little break in the thing and they're, they're kind of hidden down behind the bridge. So I caution everybody to remember that.
Thank you. Mr. Seers?
I'd like to go a step further with WIBs, talk about what is and what can't be. And, because we have, I was called this week on an ordinance where there are 1,000 square feet from being able to build the house they want to build and it's an odd square footage. And there's many ordinances on the books that are like that, where you can do something through Health Department, through setbacks, through KAMA or anything else, but you can't do them because we're 1,000 square feet out of the norm of what the lots are. So I'd like, if we're gonna look at that, I think there's a whole line of issues we should look at. And I'd like to also say that, mayor, your book that you gave us, Atomic Habits, has been interesting. It brings back some basics and thought process, but it also brings to light a little bit of where we've become as overall country in thinking things should happen because things should just happen.
Thank you, thank you, everybody. Brings us to the, to the mayor's agenda. Before I, I'd like to speak to some of these issues that were, that were brought up today before I get to the two agenda items that are there. I share the profound disappointment in the way the Little Bridge project turned out. Cliff and I have shared a number of texts and emails and follow-up to DOT. And you follow up and you follow up and we've got three little lights blinking there on one side. And they fell well short, I think, of everybody's expectations on that. And at, at some point, I'm afraid we're just gonna have to call them out about it. But I, I hate to do it very publicly, but it's, it's really a problem. And it, and it casts doubt on partner, every partnership going forward about the extent to which they're gonna meet their, their liabilities. I participated in the, in the Bike Rodeo, I went by and checked on the Bike Rodeo. Also participated in the Ride to School and met with several families. There was quite a turnout at the Food Lion in Naggs Head, folks who, who biked and walked to school. And that was really a, a great morning. We had a chilly day for the Bike Rodeo at school. The Bike to School Day was, was much better. And you're right, Commissioner Cahoon, it is by and large the adults who need education about safe bike riding. And finally, before I, well, now a couple more things. The Rod and Custom Festival, I participated in the offering a welcome to the participants there Saturday. And they lucked out on the weather, they had a tremendous day that Saturday. They had a larger-than-expected turnout of, of guests there, folks who came to see the vehicles. We ended up called, our officers came out and assisted with folks crossing there, which raises the issue of the need for a crosswalk there, that's, that's something that we need to, to pursue again. But that was, there were, there were groups from, from all over the country there. The group from Florida, there was a large group from Florida. They booked a number of hotels here and they committed to come back next year. And I believe they booked their hotels before they left. So it was a significant economic shock to the town as well. The, the mayor's roundtable for the coast that Cliff mentioned briefly was something that in conversation with Secretary Regan, was one of several events where we're, we're trying to get more of the state involved, expand the footprint of communities and, and leaders who are opposed to offshore oil and get it away from just being the towns that are right along the beach that would be most immediately affected. We made some progress there, getting that footprint expanded inward, inland, which was part of the goal. All of the mayors who were there committed to be involved in further conversation with our state and federal, federal legislators to try to, to move the needle there. And that, that's really what we can do. We can't, we can't affect what the, the president and the administration do, but we can affect the way, or what, we can't affect the way our legislators feel about it and, and potentially how they might vote when they get the opportunity. And so all of those mayors in the room were committed to further conversation. We need to strateg, we will be strategizing how to do that. I think we're, out of the 50 mayors from the 20 KAMA counties who were invited, we're getting very close to having 25 signatories on that resolution, which I think is, is pretty decent. I did, at the secretary's request, attend a couple of other meetings with leaders in counties where they have not passed resolutions in opposition to offshore drilling. I do think that we made some progress there. There were some, some significant things learned, I think, that can help us, help them so that they, they can find the right message and the right voice and, at the right time. So there will be continued conversations with them as well. Finally, that brings me to the items that we have printed on the agenda and that is to set two dates. Let's talk first about item two, which is discussion of a September retreat date. And I believe there was a, was there a proposed tentative date for that? The 12th of September. I know that's looking way ahead, I hope that's far enough out that if we talk about it today, that's Thursday, the 12th.
Works for me.
It works for me. I would just remind the board that the retreat date and the manager's review and the manager's contract are all in September and October.
Yes.
So we've got all that to work on as well during that month.
Yes. Any objection or, does 12th work for you?
12th works for me. 12th works for me. Commissioner Fuller raised two good points about other things we have going on that month as well.
I would think that we could get.
The current contract that was signed two years ago expires September. And the manager has to be reviewed by September.
Usually do that at a board meeting.
I mean, I'm just saying, don't, you know, just watch your dates.
Yes, understood. Mr. Seers? Okay. Then it looks like the 12th and we do that as a one day. So if you will put that on your calendar, please, and we will work on a location.
Are you talking an 8:30 time or 9:30 time or?
I would think an 8:30 I would think an 8:30 to hopefully something like 4:00. Okay, thank you. We'll put that on the calendar. And then, discussion of a workshop date for the Unified Development Ordinance. And I guess I would ask... No, I don't, I don't need to ask that. We all have the, the UDO in hand. We're all gonna have some questions about it. We are going to bring forth issues when we get into the workshop about how it took its form, and, you know, any outstanding issues that we might have with it. That's what a workshop is for. So I guess I would ask primarily, what is the, what is the board's interest in terms of timeframe here to try to, to get that done? Hopefully not. Is it, is it some, let me ask first, is that a workshop that somehow needs to happen in May, or is that in June?
Here, here's my perspective. Okay, we got the UDO. ADUs have been taken out of the UDO.
Right.
I think that was a good move. Now we can really proceed on the UDO, I hope. With accessory dwelling units, unless there is some driving force that makes us want to get it done real soon, I'm fine doing it as we have the time. That's just where I am.
May's kinda cramped right now.
Well, I, I, I think that's right.
Thank you.
That's right. Do we have anything on our schedule for the, what would be our second June meeting that we should have on our calendar? Do we have anything at this point, Cliff, in your mind that we need that date for?
Uh, I'm looking, that would be the 19th?
Right.
No.
Okay, Juneteenth.
Yeah, that's what they call it.
I don't see anything. I mean, that, that would be a 7 o'clock meeting?
Doesn't have to be.
Right.
I mean, I think that that goes tonight mainly per, primarily because of daytime working people. So ask those people if we could do it during the day, or wanna do it at night.
Right.
During the day would work, as long as it's a reasonable, as long as it's not 7:00 in the morning or into the late afternoon.
Okay.
You may, you may adopt the budget that day. Then in the public hearing usually is, you may not.
Okay. All right. So does June 19th work for everybody?
In the morning.
In the morning?
Yeah, we can, I guess, schedule the need for the, the workshop, similar to what we did with this.
Yeah. Okay. And if we have business to do in terms of budget adoption, we will do that at the same time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So June the 19th at 9:00 AM. Thank you. I realize that there's a lot. And appreciate everybody's attention to all of the issues that are going on and that we have to address. Other business to come before the board. Hearing none, then I believe a motion would be in order to recess to our budget workshop.
So move.
A second.
Have a motion and a second to recess to the budget workshop. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you.